All right, it's seven o'clock. I'm gonna call the regular meeting of the board selection two quarter. Our first item of business is the pledge of allegiance. Sarah, would you like to lead this?
I believe this is the one of the United States of America into the public and why nation of your own individual delivery justice for all.
I do have something I'd like to add as an added agenda item to compare to the annual town meeting. It's gonna be on December twenty eighth. Other new business ten each. If we can add the disposition of South Road ownership for certain properties and referral to town meeting.
I'm gonna go get a drink too. I muted.
Can I have a motion to add that please?
Ten each.
Ten each. Motion to add the dispersment of the South Road and referral to town meeting under ten each.
Second.
Made in second and all in favor?
I opposed.
Thank you very much. All members of board selection are here present. Our first item of business is the approval of our meeting minutes from December first, twenty twenty two. They were included in your packet. Are there any corrections?
I move that we approve the December first, twenty twenty two, regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. I'll ask again, any corrections? See none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you for everything you did with these minutes because I know it was a tough one for you.
Thanks. Okay, so we're gonna move on now to public participation. I'm gonna ask, first, I'll ask if anybody in the room would like to address members of the board of selectmen, and then I'll do the same for members online. We are joined this evening by OPM under Secretary Martin Heft to talk about property revaluation. So what we're going to do when we get to that item, which is the next thing, is Martin and I will explain what the statutory process is for revaluation, take questions from the board, and then take questions and comments from the public. So for the purposes of public participation, I'd ask that you limit your comments to things other than the property revaluation until we get to that item after this public participation session. So with that said, is there anybody here in the room who would like to address members of the board of selectmen? Please state your name and your address. Is there anyone online who would like to address the members of the board of selectmen? If so, please unmute yourself and give your name and your address. Okay, there will be a second opportunity for public participation on general topics later in the meeting and relevant to the property revaluations after our presentation. Under Secretary Heft, would you care to come up? So we are joined by Under Secretary of OPM, which is the governor's office policy and management. Martin Heft, Martin has been a municipal official for many years, including serving as a municipal finance officer and his first selectman in the town of Chester. Or is it fourteen years?
Well, twelve years as first selectman, four on the board.
Okay. So I mean, no, no greater than the workings of municipal government, but most recently he's worked under three OPM secretaries. Did you start with Barnes? So, so Barnes, then McCollough, and now Secretary Beckham. We're delighted to have you tonight, sir. Thank you very much for being here.
Happy to be here.
So we're gonna start off, Martin and I and Amy put Amy O'Toole, our finance director, put together a little explanation for what rebal is, why it's happening now, and what our remedies are. So. But Martin, you wanna lead off with this?
Sure. May want to have to side screen down there so I can see everything terrific. So, good evening, everybody. Connecticut General Statute, section twelve dash sixty-two outlines the requirements of what a revaluation is and required in the state of Connecticut. Revaluation means to establish the present true and actual value of all real property in a town as of a specific assessment date. Another statute actually references that date as of October first is the assessment date. And this is obviously to equalize the tax burden, bring all property to its fair market value. Revaluation is required every five years by statute, and there's two kind of methods, if you will. A revaluation is either a statistical update, revaluation, or a full physical. State statutes require that a full physical revaluation is done every ten years, which means you're actually going out and fully inspecting the individual property. During COVID, we actually had, you know, three years ago, or revaluations, they were actually done by a data mailer for that because of not being able to go out into the properties. And then the statistical is done, you know, those opposite five years, if you will, which is based upon sales ratios and the sales that go on for that. So I just kind of, you wanna hit the next slide and it's there. So East Windsor's revaluation schedule, the revaluation schedule is set by Office of Policy and Management, which is also, you know, all of this is in state statutes, so that we're just following one of the state statutes outline. Public Act twenty-two dash seventy-four did change the revaluation schedule in the state of Connecticut to better align municipalities moving forward. But East Windsor is, you know, currently at twenty twenty-two, the next one's scheduled for twenty-seven, which does not change. But then there is a slight shift further outward than it's twenty thirty-one and twenty thirty-six. So there is a short change there of the five years. Some towns change one year or another as we move forward that way. So that is the new revaluation schedule effective now, but it doesn't change anything in East Windsor until actually officially twenty thirty-one of the schedule. So.
So that means twenty seventy, thirty-one, twenty-four years.
Right, they're right aligning us with the region.
They're realigning.
Yeah, they're realigning with your cog regions, your council of government regions, getting twenty percent of the municipalities in your regional council of governments to revow at the same time. So there's a better pool of resources to be able to be used and more to be able to team up with another municipality within that region that you could contact together, you know, for efficiencies. That's the purpose of what twenty-two dash seventy-four did. So what happened this year was statutorily required. And it happened, it so happens that it corresponds with the real estate market going crazy. So certainly we're aware of the impact that that's going to have on our constituents. So Martin and I have talked with our state representatives, state representatives and our state senator about what the options are available to the municipality to mitigate that in whatever means we can. And we really have three options, which is recognize that the market describing, I wish, if people online would please just keep themselves muted, that would be great.
So we can either fully implement the revaluation that was just done, recognizing that it did capture where the market value of homes is. We can take that valuation that was done and we can phase that in over a period of time, or we can not implement this revaluation, and the statute allows us to, in one year's time, conduct another one, which would give the market an opportunity to kind of rebalance a little bit. So there are pros and cons to each of those things and why it was important. And when Amy and I and our legislators met with OPM, it was really enlightening to see that there are pros and cons of each of those. And we need to collectively understand what the good and bad options of each of those are so we can make a decision that's in the best interest of the community.
First, like, if I may just add one other thing, just to give a kind of quick, just little history as, you know, as we're gonna get into a little bit further here to just kind of give you the, some additional information from kind of the start of COVID, if you will. Twenty and twenty-one, obviously, you know, the height of COVID, fifty-two municipalities actually went through revow over those two years and implemented their revaluations. Twenty twenty-two, so, which was, you know, for not the twenty-two revalue will be implemented kind of, you know, moving forward, but those that just implemented this past year, thirty-eight municipalities, there was only one penalty waiver done. So we had one municipality out of that thirty-eight that did not implement, all other thirty-seven did. Two municipalities phased in. And currently for twenty twenty-three, the next one, we only have one that has actually requested a delay legislative wise out of the forty-six that are scheduled for twenty twenty-three rebounds for that. And just to note that, you know, it's widely known, and if you look at figures from twenty twenty even till now, that the the global pandemic, you know, the market is staying the same, you know, over these years. If you look at that percentage growth, you know, whether it be in the residential side, where it could be anywhere from twenty, forty percent. We've seen apartments go sixty to eighty percent, you know, through that, we're seeing that consistently over these years, over this whole, you know, kind of five-year cycle that we're actually seeing here. So I just wanted to, you know, present that to everybody so you can kind of see where the trends are that we're seeing coming in when we review the audit reports and that.
Got that.
Okay, I'll get it.
Everybody on that.
Yeah, but that includes us. Oh, actually. Let's get out of There we go. Okay. Are we ready? So let's look at the pros and cons of the options that are available. We'll start off with implementation, implementing rebound fully. So this allows for possible real estate market correction. No, it doesn't. From this is that, that's not the problem. What, so what this does is it captures where the market is right now. Yeah. At least it if we fully implemented this, it would lead to a considerable drop in our existing mill rate, which is thirty-four point three eight. That would, that would drop considerably. They would also reduce the tax rate that's levied on motor vehicles because motor vehicles are unaffected by property revaluation, but they are affected by the mill rate. So as the mill rate goes down commensurately, so too does the tax on the motor vehicles. The cons, clearly, there is a, there is a significant tax rebalancing. Most significantly, what we've seen based on the results from this revaluation is it, it is on smaller homes. Ranches in particular, when, because of the demand driven based on the market, went significantly up in value. The statistical evaluation didn't look at individual homes as a full revaluation did. It looked at just market trends. So boiling it down to a relatively understandable explanation, it took the sales history, we'll use ranches as an example, it took the sales history for ranches. The change over the five-year period, and then it assigned the new value per square foot to existing ranches. So it's not indicative of necessarily work that was done out of a particular home, but it captured the market based on what the homes that were sold showed in changing value. That's, that's not if, that's only really true in my estimation if your house was on the market over the last five years. If you haven't, if you've lived in your house for fifty-five years, it doesn't really matter what the statistical changes, that doesn't change the value if it's not for sale, is my, my view. I'm sure Under Secretary Heft will have a different opinion on that. What the full implementation would do is it shifts the tax obligation from motor vehicles to homes. So although you're gonna see a reduction in your motor vehicle taxes, it would shift the burden onto the homes, and that's a significant con. If the, the board were to decide to implement that, our next steps would be to simply prepare the grant list as usual and submit it to OPM by January thirty-first. We don't have to do anything in order to implement that out of the normal course of practice. Phase, phase in is another option, and this can be done over a four-year period, and we can base it in a percentage, in varied percentages, not, not less than twenty-five percent per year. So the town of West Hartford, as an example, is doing a two-year phase in, in the current revaluation. They're doing a twenty-five percent phase in and a seventy-five percent in year two, and they're back to full market in year three. If the town were to elect to do that, and some circumstance should change. We, we would have the option through legislative, through our legislative body, which is the town meeting, to discontinue that phase and simply fully implement the revaluation after, we'll say, the first year because we can, we can opt out of a phase and mid-phase. What the major benefit of this does is it captures the change in the, the grand list, but it phases that in over time, so the burden is less impactful on homeowners. If the, one of the major downsides that maybe Under Secretary Heft can talk about is the effect that this would have on our statutory formula, formulaic grants, most notably ECS school funding. Because we're, we're based, those formulas are based on our equalized net grand list, and we'd be, we would be phasing in that equalized net grand list over a period of time. That would have an effect on our statutory grants. We don't know, and we cannot know, based on conversations with OPM, what that effect is. Whether that's the difference of a hundred thousand dollars or two million dollars is, is not, that's a known unknown. So that's something that I've asked you several times about, and we just won't know the answer to that. So that, that stands out to me as a con. It affects state-owned college and hospital pilot grant formulas, which doesn't affect us, but it wouldn't have municipality had those. It minimizes the drop in the mill rate that we would see by implementing the new grant. So instead of dropping, it's gonna drop incrementally instead of considerably all at once. And that won't also capture any changes in the budget in the hours. It would also relate to a more minimal drop in the reduction in taxes on automobiles. And it locks in lower commercial values for the next five years. The statute does not allow for values, for value decreases to be phased in. They're limited to phased increases only. So if you're, if you're a property owner whose value went down, that's happening automatically. And that means that that phase in burden is gonna be felt more on people who are phasing in their increase over time. So if we were to do this, this requires a vote of our legislative body, which means we would need to trigger a town meeting to discuss this and vote on it, and that needs to happen sometime in February or early March.
I think you have to do a statutory by April, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm building in. Anything to add on this one?
No, I think that, you know, covers it. There's a, you know, I provided the first like with the whole document on phase in for all the different pieces. There's a lot more additional work that has to come in on a phase in on a local level as well, where the grand list is changing every year of that phase in, where, you know, where yes, your grand list changes every year, but when you're doing a, a phase in, you've got to change like every single property every year by that value percentage that you're doing versus making the changes to whoever had the building permit here and everything else that way. So there is an additional piece of administrative work that has to be done and additional reporting that when you do a revalue, you're reporting all your sales ratios, things like that. So there's more administrative work that also happens in a phase in.
And then the last option is do not implement this revaluation and reconduct one in one year. And this is something that we are statutory allowed to do one time or one year. So that means if we elect to do this, we have to do another revow in the next twelve months, and that one has to be implemented. So what this would do is it would provoke the swings in commercial and residential property owners. It doesn't compound other household pressures that everybody is going through from inflation and interest rates and gas prices and utility costs. It allows the, the market to potentially stabilize in the next twelve months, just as an academic exercise. And I know that assessors love this, but I looked on Zillow, and my home personally has gone down ten thousand dollars in value since October first. So that says to me that something is happening there, or something had happened prior to that that may be correcting itself. So that, that is one of the major upsides of doing a delay. The cons, it does result in the additional cost of having to conduct another revaluation. There is the potential that we would receive a penalty from OPM, although that can be waived by the secretary. It would require our revow schedule to remain as is outlined in the statute, which means even if we were to delay the year, we would still be up four years after that. And because of the change in the schedule that, that has been adopted in statute, we would be up again four years after that. The major con that I see with, with delay is the market uncertain. We just don't know that the market's gonna be any lower in twelve months. It could be higher. I don't think that's what I'm starting to see, but I'm, I'm not an expert in this. So if we were to do this, we would simply prepare our brand list to submit to OPM using the former brand list numbers, and I would submit a waiver to Secretary Beckham, asking, explaining what the extraordinary circumstances are that, that precipitate our request. And I would think that those things that I outlined before probably wouldn't meet that standard of extraordinary circumstances.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
What is the cost of the revow?
About a hundred thousand.
What's the penalty?
The penalty is, is it fifty percent of the P-Quot grant? One hundred percent of people have fifty percent of those.
So it's a hundred percent of the local capital improvement, which is about seventy-nine thousand for East Windsor, and you're fifty percent of Mashentucket because right now it's paymentless, not formula, that would be about seventy-seven sixteen.
So it comes out to be eighty-six thousand. Correct. Now, that also could be waived by OPM.
Correct, and I will mention that twenty twenty, OPM did waive two penalties, two towns for penalty, and in twenty twenty-one, we did waive one. So, you know, there's some precedent there. I mean, I wouldn't foresee that if, you know, penalty waiver comes in, then it would be denied. It's not my call, but recommendation would be from, you know, going through this and everything, you know, would be as we've done these other ones for these same reasons. You know, I would foresee that it would be approved.
I think one of those guarantees, right?
Correct.
I don't know if you can answer, but out of the ones that did apply, were there ones that were denied? But no, okay.
No, those are the three that actually applied between twenty twenty and now, and all three of those were approved under two different secretaries as well, so.
Thank you.
So first, I'll, I'll ask if the board has any questions for the undersecretary, and then we'll open it up to the public for any questions or comments, and then we'll bring it back to the board.
Okay, just off the clarification, you said a hundred percent of the WOCS, which is seventy-nine thousand, and you also said that on the P-Quot is another seventy-seven?
It's fifty percent of your P-Quot fund, which is about seventy-seven hundred dollars. It's, it's the fifty percent number.
Oh, seventy-seven hundred.
Wow, correct, is your, is your fifty percent number of that.
Okay. Will need to be difficult, but it's the right thing to do. First of all, I want to thank Jason for not making the decision on his own, but he had the right by law to do that. But he cared enough about the board and the council people to recognize that fact, that it shouldn't be, you know, one person's decisions, but he brought it to us and said, I'd like to bring it to the town. So thank you for that. I think that's the right thing to do, and I appreciate that. But I have a concern. If we were to go with plus funding per year, and we were able to get the penalties waived, would be awesome. What liability are we going to be putting yourself in with those that have actually gone down tremendously in value, regardless of the market and how it's driven? There are several apartment complexes that have gone down dramatically. Do they have a right to come back and appeal our decision? They just have to live with that decision.
Correct. Because you're not implementing a revaluation, there's no figures for them to appeal, you know, in essence, because you did not implement it on that. So, you know, that's just, you know, the overall piece of it, they, they're not getting an assessment change. The only assessment change is obviously those building permits, changes in your property, whatever else, you know, the standard, you know, you would actually be implementing a statistical valuation of, you know, all the properties for one more year.
One, one question that, that I've asked you offline, and I want to make sure it's out there for people to know about. If we were to elect to delay implementation, so we, we start again in twelve months, and the results actually came back the same or worse. Would phase in still be an option available to the town?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Can we nigger on that value, which we will do against lock, correct?
I'm sorry?
We couldn't say because we didn't like the outcome of the second revow and revert back to the first. Can't do that.
No, because those values are based upon this current year in a timeframe, based upon that October first date that I mentioned. So you can't even like take, be like Dexter and say, oh, well, we'll use this one because it's better than that one. You can't. You know, it's basically if you decide to both own, you know, or not both own, but you know, not implement this one, all these figures, everything else basically just get popped on the shelf and nothing happens for them.
So would, would I assume correctly that if we kept the current revaluation, that over the course of the next three and a half years, because I'm gonna make the assumption that property values are gonna go back to some kind of normalcy for those that aren't wanting to sell, which then would take and add more money to the tax base for those years, which will bring the mill rate even further down? Potentially?
That's not.
No, because the spending is gonna increase.
No, because you're basing in, so the, the value.
I'm not saying phase in then.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought that.
No, I'm not saying phase in, and I'm, I'm just saying the, the second valuation, if we keep the first valuation the way it is, tax is gonna be higher this year. Moving forward, tax is gonna be higher. So our mill rate should keep dropping because our tax revenues are gonna be greater over a longer period of time.
Oh, will depend on your budget.
So if, if we kept status quo, which is the, the, the revaluation that our current budget is based on, the one that was done in twenty seventeen, then the, the mill rate would be thirty-four point three eight, plus or minus whatever the impact on the budget, and the grand list growth absent the revaluation. So new construction permits, personal property that's coming to town, those things will change the grand list. The grand list, the grand list is made up of three parts, real property, personal property, and motor vehicle. In order to figure out what the, the mill rate is, you need to take the, the approved town budget divided against the total grand list. We only know one of the three parts of total grand list so far. The only piece we know is real estate. We do not get no personal property, we do not get no motor vehicle. So we can't even speculate as to what the mill rate change would be. We do know that, assuming status quo, we're looking at about a thirty-four point three eight mill rate next year. That would be based on the valuation derived from twenty seventeen.
That's one clarify.
Any other questions?
No.
Sarah?
Um, you kind of asked my question about if the phase in was an option. I just have, I don't really have any questions. I just have a lot of concerns. I mean, I, I'm personally leaning towards the, you know, the do not implement because I just think there's the way everything is in the world and all the panic of, you know, just being able to feed your family now is really not the time to, to do this. But I, I am, I mean, I am concerned that, you know, they deny or, and we get the penalty and, and but I think that I don't, I mean, I'm totally not in favor of, you know, implementing it the way this, this is. But just concerns, but no real questions right now.
All right. Yeah. You mentioned in phase in that it's administratively more work. How much more of a nightmare is it for volunteers doing budget between departments and our board of finance? Does it make it extra difficult because you're dealing with this percentage number of basing in this evaluation and the grand list and does it make it more difficult? That side of things too.
I, I would not foresee that it would because you're working upon, you know, a set budget, you know, for what numbers you're looking at there. It's, yes, it's gonna affect your grand list because your grand list growth, that you would have necessarily said, okay, well, we were gonna increase here, you know, at that hundred percent. But now we're only doing twenty-five percent over four years. So we know that that full grand list growth, you're not gonna see it. So you have less grand list, which means you have less tax revenue from that to do. But it doesn't affect, you know, in that sense, it's the overall picture on it. It doesn't affect the work that you're gonna do. That's gonna be the same. The work is more so gonna be in the assessor's office because of the reporting that they're gonna have to do now every year of a phase in, which typically they'd only have to do once, and then five years again on certain pieces. But now they're gonna have to do, because they're phasing in, they gotta do the sales ratio every single year, which you kind of get exempt from doing that with a, you know, with, you know, fully implementing. So there's some additional work piece in that sense. And that's why I say the administrative, not, you know, necessarily overburdening, but we do want to make people aware that there is, you know, the duties that happen, you know.
What were the reasons that some of the others recently chose to not implement? Was it same thing like high, too high, basically?
Yeah, basically, I mean, most majority of, you know, Connecticut towns have seen, you know, the shift from commercial to residential. You know, on this, if you look at past trends, I mean, we've seen it go the opposite way, you know, in past years, you know, you could take this by. If you will, the five year cycle of the revaluation cycle. And if you went back, I was at an assessors uh association meeting yesterday and they were all sitting there talking saying. Yeah, remember twenty thirteen, it was the opposite. You know, commercial went higher and residential went down, which was great for the residents, bad for the business, you know, and then you start seeing shifts and everything that way. Um, but that was kind of like that whole period and then it shifted again and now it shifted the other way. You know, you see it kind of in that cycle. And that's kind of where I mentioned, you know, as we've seen, you know, the housing market right now, it's still up there. We know that. Um, on it where some of it's starting to settle a little bit more. Some of the reports I was reading one today, you know, that kind of said that. Um, on it, um, the report was actually that Hartford, West Hartford was the top city in the in the nation for housing right now. Surprisingly, out of, you know, ten cities or something, you know, on it, and it's just, you know, who knows how all the figures are, you know, uh, calculated with that. Um, but you know, the other towns I've seen, even, you know, we've had, I was at similar meetings like this for trouble. Greenwich, uh, Stanford, big cities, you know, going through this same conversations because the values went so high and everything else. And having to make these same difficult decisions that, you know, that's to be made on the local level. You know, state can sit here and say, this is the trends we're seeing. This is what's allowable. Here's the statutes. Our ultimate decision is up. You know, to your board here in the town for, you know, how you want to handle that. And some of its projections, we had, you know, towns looked at trouble, went through a difficult time because they saw these huge jumps. And we went through everything with them on it and they decided to just, if you will, bite the bullet and say, we're just going to implement. Because they they didn't want to phase it because of, you know, um. They were going to see too much loss revenue, you know, over those years. So they said, we're just going to bite the bullet and do it. Um, on it, they didn't, and they actually projected because theirs was last year. Their numbers would have been the same or higher this year. You know, honestly, for that, between now and next year. You know, as first I said, you could come in and be, okay, value went down. So, you know, it's less. It could also be higher. You could be in a worse situation, you know. It's a, no one knows, you know, if we all have that crystal ball, I guess we'd be in other jobs, but um. But I think, you know, but you know, simply is the other towns are experiencing the exact same thing. And that's why they looked at postponing. You know, or whether they did a delay, you know, through legislature or they decided to phase, we had two towns that phased in, which was the first two towns. And probably ten years that phased in, um, which was, you know, West Hartford and New Haven, you know, this year, but they only did it over two years. Um, on that, they didn't do it over the full five years that it's allowable. Um, and most of them, you know, because it's a lot of work and there's those, you know, laws and grants, everything, you know, potential. So they just. You know, didn't want to extend it out farther than that. Good. Okay, um, recognizing that this is a question of high public concern. Um, I'm going to first ask anybody in the room if they would like to to speak their piece or uh if the undersecretaries want to take a couple of questions. Um, we can do that and then I'll turn the same opportunity to people online. Please identify yourself as always with your name and your address. You, sir, I saw your hand first.
Wayne Sherry, one nineteen Runcle Street. It's a hard pill to swallow. You think it would ever go down seventy two percent, seventy two and a half percent? That there and give me an honest answer.
I wish I wish I I could. I'm not, I won't. I don't see it going the opposite direction.
Yeah, thank you, correct. Right. C N R, you either stick your right hand or your left hand into the penis. These are not options. You know, you can't, you got better odds than when he gets on. That's the word I got here, but this, it's not going down. The only option we have is to bite the bullet, pay the money for five years. That's terrible. Why does the state look at this and say, this is not reasonable? They're not going to do that.
There there are uh property tax reform proposals in the legislature every single year. Uh, and there's probably three dozen of them every single.
Terrible.
The problem is nobody's come up with a better system.
Jason, better system than looking at the last year of housing.
I know. I'm in the same boat you are. You, sir.
Paul Anderson, eighty nine Main Street, Rock Brook. It was just this past year, we were outing our commercial residential ratio and it's getting much better. Of course, that was because of commercial development that took place, not the value of commercial went up. Which probably still is valid, doesn't fix the problem, but it. It's still valid. One of the missing items obviously is motor vehicle. Now, my understanding of motor vehicle, it goes by book value, period.
Helen, do you want comments on that? Because they're changing that.
Um, at the moment, at least for this current year, um, we use the N A D A bill.
Right.
Seventy percent.
Yeah, so.
Every year will change.
But the issue there is that. Used car values have gone way up as well. Because of the scarcity. And then you can't get new cars, they can't make them. So I'm looking at that is, I don't know if that's partial relief in a sense that the values are going to be higher. So whatever mill rate we end up with, motor vehicle will be contributing as well, not just residential. Because those values are up. And that's money to support the budget, so. It may be that we have to just accept what we have and move on. Because there's too many pieces we just can't control. So like you say, there are three parts to this and you control one and the other two do what they want. Did you control anything? Or did you just think you ought to and then you wasted your time? You didn't do any good. And believe me, I see myself as one of the people getting hurt, but. I don't know what else we can do, to be honest with you. So that's my opinion.
Sir, name and address, please.
What is the average increase of the property of the evaluations? Because if everybody's goes up by forty percent. Just cut the mill rate by forty percent across, but you know, it's not even the same. But I know it's not even. I own two properties in town, one's gone up by forty percent, the other's gone up by eighty percent. So it's, what's the average in town? I know you mentioned with the camp. And camp houses were definitely more than others or some type of houses or.
Um, the average throughout the town was forty percent for residential.
It, you know, but how many times in the last few years have you heard uh that house sold for sixty thousand dollars over market value and was on the market for three days? I mean, how many times have you heard that? I understand. I and we, I share that sympathy completely. Other comments from folks in the room? Yes, sir.
Again.
For the second time.
Yes, Wayne Sherry, one nineteen D B Street. You know, it hurts me because like five years, we're going to have to pay this and you don't have any idea what it is like to live on fixed income. I know you're working, so we're only being, okay, we get an increase from social security, Medicare takes it away. It's 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 just really not fair, seventy, eighty percent.
And I understand, sir, my mother is on fixed income and community. She lives here in China and, you know, in Connecticut and she's.
Probably lived in her house for fifty years.
She has, yeah, yes. Um, so, you know, I completely understand that and I've been in your first selectancy before here and everything else. Obviously, I can only present to you what, you know, is in state statutes and everything. No, definitely. That was what I was just going to say is, you know, as we work with legislative changes and everything else and looking at these things, I do take all this back. And work with the legislature to see what changes we can make to better improve the system. We do have a change coming on motor vehicles starting next year for the way theirs are are going to be valued, which was passed this past year. To help with that, so you're not seeing those big jumps and everything else to help stabilize that. It's one piece of it. It's not the largest piece, but. It's a start and we're starting to get, you know, some action on that, so. Yes, sir, name and address.
I'm curious. Let's just assume the budget doesn't change this year. With all these evaluations changing. Would it back, would we still pay the same amount of taxes?
The the average would, but the the issue is where is the shifting value? So if if your home is going up seventy percent, but all is going down thirty percent. But the budget remains unchanged, the total taxes collected remains unchanged. It's just who pays it is going to shift.
Sort of like an imbalance or?
It's a rebalancing.
That's where it sounds like it's really not fair, but. Like Mr. Anderson says, it's not what you can do by.
Well, we have the, we have only the two options available for us, which is phase in or or uh don't implement. Pros and cons with everything, including in full on implementation.
So it's not safe to say if the budget doesn't change, doesn't necessarily mean that your taxes was out in the same.
The total taxes collected would stay the same.
Yes.
But then, again, assuming state aid is flat and that the the change in personal property and motor vehicle is flat. And tho- those pieces aside, you know, to simply say, well, the real estate's up forty percent. If the mill rate came down forty percent, it's even. Well, that's only true in the macro sense. It's not true in in an individual household sense. It's going to be winners and losers.
So I can safely say is, you can't say your taxes are going to stay. You can't make a flat statement. Your taxes are going to stay the same. If the budget doesn't change. I can see where that's the problem.
Uh, you, sir, and then you, sir. Name and address, please.
Jim Barton, one fifty eighth South Water Street. Um, I'm hearing uh comments about shifting. Commercial uh and residential. Has that, how much has that happened in this reval? Has has commercial uh? Uh, remained the same or gone down while the residential has gone up so so much?
Commercial went up ten percent, residential went up forty percent. Again, from a macro perspective, not all the same. But if you think about the last five years, people aren't really interested in office space. Um, they have been very interested in homes. And that's what the market is showing.
Yes.
You, sir.
Uh, excuse me, Tom Lancer, twenty seven Laurel Circle. My question, um, to you, sir. There have been feelings out there, people sort of shooting the messenger that they sort of doubt. The reputation of the company that's doing the reevaluation. Um, is there any reason to be concerned? How many, how many companies like this do reevals in Connecticut? And is there ever been any concern about their accuracy or their formulas or their methods?
Sure. Good question. Thank you. So there's nineteen certified revaluation companies that are allowed to do work in the state of Connecticut. Uh, state statutes require that they be certified um by the state in order to do work in the in the state. As well as all their employees or workers that they have for them also have to be certified. So they have to meet the Connecticut standards to do that. Um, so that's one piece of it. Uh, when a revaluation is completed, uh, the assessor and the town have to file with the state of Connecticut. A certification document um based on criteria that's also in the state statutes. For that to show that they met the criteria and they've come up with certain values that fit within their certain uh allowing ranges. So we do review that once a revale is done um for that to every municipality, you know, that is doing a revale. So there is a checks balance system. Um, obviously, any contribution to the municipality and the vendor that have their own contract. We don't get involved in that on a state level, you know, because we're more so if you look at the audit side. Thanks, you're welcome. Any other comments or questions from folks in the room? Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Bill Sign, seventy two Lincoln Road. I have a question or comment, I guess. And I can't remember back to two thousand seventeen, to be honest with you. Was two thousand seventeen like a depressed period or something that possibly led to the larger increase we have right now?
The the change in valuation from uh in twenty seventeen was pretty much flat.
And the only reason I ask that is because my house was built in two thousand sixteen. And when I actually got the evaluation, I went back in time to evaluate it. And so two thousand seventeen was supposedly a physical. Where they actually looked at the property evaluation. I think my house personally in two thousand seventeen was way under that, knowing what I paid to build the property and what the town had to assess that. So in reality, when I looked at my assessment when I got to now. I'm honestly think they valued my house properly this year, but not in two thousand seventeen. I have a sixty five percent increase in my profit. But really looking at my two thousand seventeen numbers, where my big question mark is really is the two thousand seventeen number, not the twenty twenty two number. I don't want to help anybody, it will help me either. But that's where my situation, looking at what it is, I looked at every line like my side rebound. Was I I truly questioned the two thousand seventeen over this new world of that.
So I I will tell you that um I spent time with the the on the ground guy. Um, quite a bit of time this week, we actually drove around East Windsor looking with property cards, house to house. And I said, okay, why is that one changing this much and that one's changing the other? And he was able to explain on point all of them. After that conversation, my perspective was the values are correct. But the the concern is that the timing isn't.
Yeah.
Because there's still those other pressures with that everybody is facing. Um, and gas is getting a little bit more reasonable, but pretty much nothing else is. Um, Eversource is about to go crazy in the first of the year. So so it's that, I don't question the validity of the values. I question the timing and whether or not it's the right thing for us to sustain that now.
I said, when I really look at mine and really think about it, yeah, I knew it was shocking, like, hold on, you're going to go up the down and you swear if you done, whatever. So I said, you know, looking back at where I was in two thousand seventeen, I just couldn't remember what the little. Housing market, yada, 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 was in two thousand seventeen. And that's why my question was, what was two seventeen? Was it a depressed time or was it not? And I just, you know, make my comparison where I came from.
Just for reference, Bill, looking at the history of my home, granted, it's not the same as your home. But in twenty seventeen, the market was up.
Okay.
According to Zillow for my home, it was not far below what it's estimated at now.
I said, maybe, I don't know, because I said, knowing what I paid to build my house in two thousand sixteen. I mean, I literally moved in my house on. December twenty eighth, two thousand sixteen, and the green volume started. You know, a few months after that, when I went back and really looked at it, I remember like. Did I build a house at the high time of market in two thousand seventeen or what happened? So. I said, that's just where I'm coming from mine. And then I said, am I happy about the increase? No, but I mean, reality, when I look at it, I'm saying, I guess. They're not too far off.
And according to this, it dropped. Rip pretty steadily into twenty nineteen, where it then started to rebound back up.
Now, the other, the other point when I was driving around with the representative from the reval company is I was next to two identical homes. One of one of whom went up significantly in value and one of them didn't. He looks at the property card and he said, well. The last reval company missed that that house had just had a second story put onto it, whereas they got that that house had just had a second story put onto it. Two identical homes right next to each other. Both had had second floors added to them. The the property card provided by the last rebound company did not indicate one. So that shows the that these folks are actually rebalancing based on the value that that is there. They were correcting errors too.
Well, it's possible that mine, because mine was just built into a physical, now I remember doing it. They just looked at it and say, okay, it's, and then whatever flows stays at when they look at the record.
Other comments from people in the room? I'm going to turn the folks online before I let anybody go a third time, Mr. Sherry. I'll I'll give you a shot, but I want folks, let folks on the, anybody else in the room for the first time? Okay, then I'm going to allow folks to unmute themselves. There's a way to do that. Okay, if there's anybody. There's anybody who's joining? So Jennifer, you unmuted yourself. Would you like to address the board?
Um, I would. Jennifer Abbey, thirty two Race Road. I guess my only question is in regards to option three, if we reconduct in a year. I know that it was said that we only have one shot to do this. Is that just? I know that it was said that we only have one shot to do this, is that just?
So she cut out there, but uh, under Secretary Hef, can you explain what happens if the town uh opts not to implement this valuation? We do it again in a year and then decide not to do it at that point?
So. There's uh. OPM secretary cannot waive a penalty uh consecutive years. So you'd be, the penalty would be in place unless you received, you'd have to have legislative approval. So you'd have to have a bill passed through the legislature um in order to waive your penalties. And go through that course of going to a legislative function. I meant, so you could, you know, if you wind up next year, you're in the same thing, you say, well, we don't want to implement, we want to delay. You know, you have that chance of going through legislature, um, you know, process. You know, for that, um, I don't know if it would ever happen, I have not seen it in past history, or any records that we've shown that someone's delayed two years in a row, because it's not. Going to do anyone any good, you know, at that point, in all honesty, um, for it, because then your revale is going to be another two years. You know, that you're gonna be doing this all again. Um, so you know, you could do it, um, there's just that there are limitations that it has to all go through the legislature.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else online who would like to address members of the board or under Secretary Hef?
Yes, this is Greg Pinto at fourteen Perry Lane, and we joined late, so I apologize if this was addressed already. But before we make our decision, are we gonna find out what the mill rate does get adjusted to to find out the actual increase?
No, we would not, because the mill rate is is derived from the approved budget against the grand list. And the grand list is three parts. Um, and the timeframes would wish to implement each of these. We will have to make a decision before we know what the mill rate would be.
Okay, thanks, Jason.
Any other comments from anybody who's joined us online? Any other comments from anyone who's joined us online? I'll ask a third time.
I unmuted myself, Jason, this is Jamie Foster, State Rep, I just want to let you know that Jason's been with us. Meeting with the legislative delegation for months on this and making sure that we have all of your options lined out for you. But I want you to know that the full delegation has the Board of Selectmen and the First Selectmen's. Teamwork and spirit of collaboration and doing what comes best for the town. So I've been listening, taking notes, will be looping back in as a um team, working on whatever makes the most sense for you all. And whatever responsibility that sends to the legislature, we'll do it, we'll do whatever we can to make sure that this. Has the best possible outcome for the people of East Windsor, so I'm here, I'm listening. Um, I'm not a resident of East Windsor, but I am feeling your pain with you throughout this process and I am try, I will be there to help you in any way that I can.
Thank you, Representative, and thank you for your help thus far. Anybody else online? Anyone else in the room? Yes, sir, name and address.
Last word, please, Sharon. Is there any way to compare that I can see on my house? Place for the peoples to get that increase? In other words, um. My house is a salt box. And I noticed in in the descriptions and everything, salt box is separate. So, you know. Is there a way to compare to other houses? Because I didn't see the salt box itself go up like that.
If you go online to the town website and into the vision. Um, the vision part of it.
Yes.
And letting your address. Put it on it and the tab will come up, it says sales. The sales tab, you can put in your parameters and ask for salt boxes. And it will show any salt boxes that have sold within whatever range you want to put in. Okay.
I didn't see it go up seventy percent though.
Again, I, yeah.
Is it a comparison that I can? You know, is there a way?
If you give me a call or an email, I should be able to run the board of of certain categories. So it is all done. And with the assessed value before that. Who can do that?
Some points with vision still available?
They are.
Because that that would help you too.
What's that?
The guy who vision could show you what you were compared against.
Oh, you already talked to him.
And you didn't ask him that question?
I asked a lot of questions that one, I can't.
Paul, make another point?
Oh, I can.
Yes, for a very short window.
I think they're doing uh the the twenty first and twenty second. Next week.
Are available if they get in the quad.
Mr. Simon, did you have a second comment?
I'm just gonna address the gentleman that spoke. My house is considered a salt box, I did the same thing, there's nothing came up. But like I said, mine is considered a one sixty five percent, it was empty, so it must be something that's in that that they do.
Not yet, that's on the agenda later. Other comments from anybody in the room? I'll ask again for anybody online. I'm gonna have you hang around for a second, because we're gonna, um, so. We have three options. They all have different timeframes, um, the most urgent one is probably um. If we were to elect not to impede, and the reason that I say there's urgency there. Um, is because the assessor would need time to compile the grand list using the previous valuation. Uh, so. She's represented, that would take her two to three weeks in order to do that. We have a submission deadline for the grand list of January thirty first, so. We need to make sure that we're giving her as much time as possible if we elect to do that. The the phase in option is something that we could do through a town meeting in either February or March. Um, so there's there is some more flexibility with that, and then again, the uh full implementation just requires us to conduct things as usual.
Yes, I just wanted to add that you can, if you were going to um. Fully implement or not, you can also as CEO. Send a um. Letter to OPM extending the timeline to sign the grand list by a thirty days, by a month. Um, you know, for that, if, you know, um, on that, so up to reval years, I think you can do two, two months. So it just gives you a little more time, just so you're aware of that, so.
Thank you. So, where's the board? If we added another month, somewhere on March fourth. And that means, that means we would need to build, we would need to decide or rule out the delay option. Which, by the way, I think we should delay. Um, but if we were elected to elect not to do that, we would need to rule that out sometime by conservatively like the end of January. Anybody?
I'm in the position of the opinion of uh to delay. I just don't think it's the right time to implement it as is, and I feel that there's more cons to the phase in um as far as the ECS funding.
That's a big one.
And yeah, considering what's happening, you know, our education system, I don't want to touch the ECS funding. Um, so.
Charlie, what do you think?
I don't know, I'm very much undecided of this, but. Full implementation or delaying a year? A lot of residents are concerned, but at the same time. Some are saying, you know, it is what it is and. We're finding not a lot of towns have followed that same route of delaying even on their face of the same thing, so. I'm kind of torn, so. My decision is going to be based on a lot of what the rest of the board has to say.
No matter what decision that I'm going to make. There's gonna be both pros and cons, and there's gonna be positive people out there, and there's gonna be negative people out there. But at the end of the day, I have to be able to look in the mirror and take the information in um the comments that I've seen around town and the comments that I've read around town. Um, whether I agree with them or not agree with them, I have to take them all under consideration. At this point, I will say to postpone it a year. That would be what I would do.
Yeah, so I think the only two options from my point of view that are. To be evaluated are the delaying it for a year or doing it now. Then I think. I think the prices or the valuations are. Generally accurate for the market that we're in, but I think the market is extraordinary and. Really false, you know, and I don't think it's a real value of a house, I mean, and everybody says this all the time, right? Just write me a check, I'll sell it to you today, you know, but I mean, it's true, like, nobody's gonna write you that check. At that, at that price, maybe, maybe some people will, and that's what, that's why we're where we at, I I think today, but, so I think. I think that, I think the appraisals will be a little bit lower, and I realize that they, I don't know, and they could be a little bit higher, but I really feel like. They will be a little bit lower, and I think that right now. Everything else that people are dealing with. Uh, you know, with energy costs and just, you know, all the inflationary stuff. Um, this would also quite likely, you know, increase everybody's insurance premium. Uh, just all the costs that are going up, I think that it's worthwhile um. Just checking in a year from now, now it's not gonna be. It could be the same, if if it's the same, I think that it's likely that other costs will have become, you know, inflation is on its way down. We expect it to be, and nobody knows that either, but we expect it to be lower at the end of the year. Um, you know, other costs may be down and it would be a little bit less of a hit to people. Um, and and of course, we don't know all the answers, we don't know what cars are gonna cost us or anything, but I really just feel like. All things being equal. You know, we'll spend, I don't know, it's maybe like thirty or forty dollars. A taxpayer. You know, to do another revaluation, it's a lot cheaper than. Some people are really gonna get whacked here, and I think it could really uh be the difference between keeping their home and not keeping the home. So, uh, in the extreme case. But I I just feel like one year isn't gonna hurt us overall, and it does provide some shelter, I think. And I'm. Ready to make the decision now, but I'm also ready to, you know. Vote on it in two weeks, so everybody can kind of stew on it a little bit more, and I think for me, that's fine.
So for what it's worth, I asked the the same representative from the the rebound company while we were driving around. You know, do you think these prices are accurate? And they said, yes, I do. Um, and I said, so tell me what the prices are gonna be like in a year, and he said residential will be down and commercial will be up. Um, and that to me was. That was a pretty compelling statement. Um, so I I also favor the delay for those same points that you pointed out, I think people are. Getting killed right now, and I don't want to add to it.
Thanks, your question.
Yeah.
Um, as far as the rebound company, do we have an extended contract with them, like?
Not yet.
Okay, so it's a possibility that next year we could hire a different company?
We could. I don't think the company's work is flawed, though. I think, I think it's just the circumstances are bad.
Oh, I don't think it's the company either, I just, I guess, I just think. The market went up and people got greedy and lack of housing that available out there, um. People paid what they wanted to pay, and I go back to the years of those balloon payments, everyone thought those were gonna be a great idea, and then. What happened? We all know, people couldn't afford to pay those balloon payments, and they took a great loss, so. That's why I say, you're damned if you do, you're damned if you don't, and I apologize if that's not acceptable language. So.
All right, so. To Alan's point, do we want to, do we want to make a call tonight, or do you guys want to um? I'll borrow a phrase and say percolate on it.
I mean, I'm ready to make a decision tonight, but if there are members of the board that need a little time, then I can wait.
I can make a decision.
You want the motion?
I would make a motion that we delay the the revale until next year. Or how do I say it?
Do not.
Do not. Do not.
Do not.
We do not implement the revaluation.
I would make a motion that we do not implement the revaluation, thank you.
Okay.
And then you also want to instruct me to request a waiver from the Secretary of OPM?
I made my motion as such.
I made my second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any further discussion?
Um, yes, is there a way that we will get this out to the public? So the panic will kind of stop, or is there a way we can put it on the town's website, or?
Yes.
If you want to be a call?
Yep, I will do a call tomorrow, um, and let people know what the decision is, we'll also see if we can get something in the day, I.
Great.
It's gonna be in our central news.
Okay.
Excuse me, Jason.
Yes, thank you.
Run a motion by me one time again, do not implement the revaluation and.
Request a waiver of penalties from the Secretary of OPM.
Thank you.
So. I've been stewing on these numbers for like five weeks. It is a. There is no good answer, so the, once you come to terms with that, the answer, the question is, what's the the least bad answer? And I think delaying it is the least bad answer.
Um, and then as far as how, when you submit that letter, how do we, how, like, what's the length of time we?
The Secretary has thirty days after I submit, I think. Yes, so, um, it's a statute, yeah.
Okay.
The CEO has to submit the request not earlier than thirty business days after the assessor signs the grand list. So I have to wait for the the grand list? The grand list has to be signed before you can even submit the letter to us asking for a penalty waiver. Okay, and then, and but, and not later than thirty days preceding the July first, so it's in statute, I'm gonna give you your copy of this, even though you have it. Um, and then we have um. Sixty days actually after receiving the request uh to notify you um on that decision. So I need to send a waiver effectively sometime in February, the waiver request in February.
Do you have a compulsion to make it separate from the connection?
Yes.
Okay.
But debate basis.
Yes, so what, are we there yet? So, uh. I don't know, maybe you can answer that, um, the evaluation company has, um. If this passes, the evaluation company currently has people that are uh waiting to meet with them. Um, will they continue to meet with people so they can get understanding, or are they gonna tack up? As soon as they find out about the decision and leave town on it, um.
I have no idea, I have never. I have never had a guideline. I will be in touch, Martin, very soon for some guidance.
I would just, you have to look at what your contract says with the rebound company.
With the rebound company, um, technically, I do have to. Sign off on the rebound features, I'm assuming. While putting together a second one.
You're not implementing a revalue, you're not submitting anything to.
So I don't sign the grant upon sale.
You sign the grant list using the old valuation. Well, you're not using the old valuation, you're using the adjusted value, right, but not the one we just did, right? Not using your new value, very quick. Correct, right, you won't be using what the rebound company has just provided you. And you don't, and you don't have to submit the certifications for that rebound because you're not implementing it. Other comments? All in favor? I oppose. So, Karen. Under Secretary, uh, have, thank you very much, you're, I really appreciate you being here, I really appreciate your help with this. Um, uh, this is kind of above and beyond me, but I'm very grateful. Not a problem.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Any other questions, if you go through, hello, reach out, you know? Can we take a five minute break?
Making motion to recess for five minutes?
Seconded, motion has been made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I opposed or a recess at eight oh nine. Okay, it is eight A T M, we call the meeting of the Board of Selectmen back to order, we're up to communication, so. Um. Um, the first one in there is a letter that we received from Trinity College congratulating Melissa LaBelle on her recent completion of Vatican Certified Municipal Officials Program. This is a program that's run jointly between the the uh Catholic, Catholic Council of Municipalities and Trinity. And this is included in the packet for two reasons, first, I want to recognize. And this is included in the packet for two reasons, first, I wanna recognize uh Melissa's good work in accomplishing that. Um it's. Uh I wanna say it's twelve classes in areas of personal development, organizational development and community development. Um and they're offered um both online and in person. I also wanna note that there are now uh six municipal employees who have completed this. Uh which is, i- it's all self-driven, there are people who who wanted to do it and have been successful in completing the requirements and it's actually brought good ideas back to the community. Um so it is, uh I'm sorry, there's five. Uh Patty Patty Prattville, Melissa LaBelle, Melissa Maltesse, Joe Sauerhopper and myself, about the the certification, I just wanna give. Uh Melissa that recognition uh and also recognize all the other folks as well. Um the next item is a letter that we received from the Veterans Commission. Um highlighting a new public act that went into effect on October first that allows for uh certain um. Exemption for um I'm blanking, it it's the assess value, that's what it is. It gives a ten percent um credit on assessed value or ten ten percent exemption on assessed on assessed value for veterans. Um and that was passed in the springtime, it took effect October first. Uh for purposes of the Act of Veteran is is just uh defined as in somebody who received an honorable discharge or released under honorable conditions. So this is something that according to this uh statute. We can do by a vote of the Board of Selectmen, but I actually wanna clarify this as an ordinance um. One of the things that I would note in the Public Act is it actually specifies the income maximum allowed. So it has to be, you have to be making uh fifty thousand one hundred dollars or less to be eligible for this. Um that's that, having that dollar amount specified in the statute is going to mean the statute is going to have to be amended. So when we draft the ordinance, we should make sure that we're referencing the statute as amended from time to time. I'm just flagging that as a consideration because they're gonna have to go back and adjust that dollar amount as, as it moves. If this is something you guys are interested in, uh I'm happy to put this on a future agenda or uh take a crack at at getting an ordinance drafted up. Uh but it is a communication from a board advisory to us with some advice on what we should do, and I thought it was um, I thought it was good advice, so.
Currently an exemption for veterans?
There is, but it's at a different threshold, um so this goes to anybody who is a veteran. Uh as defined by twenty seven dash one oh three, and it goes up to that income dollar threshold, and that's not always the case. It's it's a higher threshold. Helen Helen said there would be something around there, with the existing program, we have something like eighteen people who qualify. Um under this one, it would be somewhere closer to. Based on the the D D two four teens of the income information we have.
I would recommend that we um wrap the ordinance up for hopefully the next week.
It's the holiday, so probably the one after that, but I'll do the best I can.
I can do that.
Alright, so this will be on the uh future agenda for further action.
Could this be a new ordinance or would it incorporate into eighteen oh four?
This is a new ordinance, it's a new statute. Yeah, it's a new statute. Which one is eighteen oh four? Well, that's something that we'll look at before, when we're in the drafting page. I just wanted you to know, you look at it, that's all of that.
Thank you.
No. So we have a reappearance, um two reappearance, Per Kepchel as a regular member to the Inland Wetlands and Water Course Agency. And Ruth Ann Lassner as a regular member for the Elderly Commission. Um I have a motion.
I'll move to reappoint Per Kepchel for Inland Wetlands Water Course Agency as a regular member for a term expiring December nineteenth, twenty twenty six. Second.
Made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Um and Mrs. Lassner.
I'll move to reappoint Ruth Ann Lassner as a regular member of the Elderly Commission for a term expiring December thirty first, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? So carry. Chief Hart, Deputy Chief Carl, come on up.
Good evening, everybody, uh glad to do a little bit, I'm interim chief Roger Hart. Um I was before the board not too long ago, probably about a month ago to discuss a grant. Um and I asked the board to approve some financing um so we could take advantage of this grant. And uh tonight I'm asking that the board. Uh give the first selectman permission to sign off on this OPM grant. And the OPM grant is a grant. That will reimburse us for thirty percent of the cost of the body worn cameras. And if you remember, I told you the number was going to be roughly sixteen thousand four hundred eighty nine. It's sixteen thousand four hundred eighty nine. So I predicted it to be exactly what it is. It's uh. I'm sorry? I'll certainly try. I'm gonna have to take a little time, so the overall number of uh that they they called. Was roughly twenty five thousand dollars for the uh the software for the first year, which is paid for, then the hardware. And software and things like the clips for the um, the units themselves, the units themselves. Summer redaction software and other items. Uh so the total was fifty four nine sixty five, it's thirty percent of that. Uh as a defined, we are not, there's two definitions, one is a fifty percent reimbursement. Those are for distressed communities, we are not a distressed community, so we fell into the thirty percent reimbursement. So I'd request that that uh uh be signed by the first select, and so we could implement that, the next step is. When we pay for the, when we receive the body worn cameras. Everything looks good, we will submit the invoice, the invoice uh will be paid by the town. Once we have the cancel check, that axon canceled back, we submit it to OPM, there you have the grant signed. The money will be uh distributed to the town. The next item is uh just more of uh notifications, since I was going to be here tonight, I figured. May as well discuss it, the uh town once again has uh. Applied for a DOT grant, Department of Transportation Grant for DUI enforcement. Uh we received a grant of roughly uh just shy of forty five thousand dollars. But the majority of that, thirty seven thousand dollars will be used. For overtime on officers on the road off of the normal shifts, patrolling, looking for DUI. There's also certain DUI checkpoints that are built into the, into the program. And we also have about five thousand dollars in equipment uh to assist us in those DUI checkpoints, lighting. Signage, cones, things of that nature, and that's one hundred percent, there's no uh. There's no uh um part that the town has to do except to supply the people. Uh we submitted that grant yesterday, first selectman signed it, and we submitted it to DOT yesterday.
Actually, the finance director signs that, I don't.
Correct, you're correct, sorry.
Um on that, is that a regional one? Do we do a a regional partnership on the DUI enforcement stuff?
We used to all combine into that, we're using Metro Traffic Services, we used to. But for some reason, now they're breaking it out into each individual town. What's in for it? I think we tend to get a little bit more. Because we are in the regional group. Uh most towns don't receive this um. And to clarify everybody, we're in what's called Metro Traffic Services, so we share our uh people with other communities. So if they're going to do whoever's in Metro. For example, Enfield, South Windsor, Manchester, if they're gonna do a checkpoint, we'll send two or three of our people to assist them. Then if we're gonna do a checkpoint, they'll send two or three, so we can have put twenty officers out there without a large expense to with, to the community.
And when, when those DUI enforcements through this program are administered. It'll be East Windsor police officers doing it in East Windsor, not Southfield folks doing it in East Windsor or East Windsor folks doing it in Windsor Lax.
It it depends, the the cars, the the roving patrols are East Windsor officers. The the cists generally come with the checkpoints because they're labor intensive. And we try to focus the arrests on uh heavy East Windsor, however, we're all cross sworn in those communities. So and we all deal with the same GA, so we all know how to do the base work.
Interesting. Other questions or comments?
I didn't know they were cross sworn, I just learned that.
I didn't, I didn't realize that was, I thought it was uh kind of a blanket sworn in state, I didn't realize it had to be done by municipal.
Yeah, we have an agreement, Metro Traffic Services has an agreement that. Was implemented years ago, i- it it gives us the same authority in this. When we're acting in the auspice of Metro Traffic Services. We can make arrests, give infraction tickets, do anything that. Cause that was a problem that we were doing, remember, we get the grant for distracted driving. And most of distracted driving is an infraction. So if we weren't cross sworn, we couldn't give infractions in another community. So we all had to to come up with an agreement to allow us to be cross sworn.
And that, this is not the rural traffic enforcement one.
No, not one, I haven't heard any information on it or the auto theft. Uh grant, I haven't heard any information on that as well. Um hopefully, we hear something soon, it was, uh one of the grants was supposed to start in December. Uh so hopefully, we hear something soon.
Okay.
Keep our fingers crossed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I don't need to sign here. No, um one of them was just an update on something that had already been done, um and the uh killer was the finance director. Okay, we had a constituent come to us, uh. Well, so let me back up here, you'll recall that. Uh we leased a parcel land on Miller Rose Road to Glenn Reikley um with the understanding that he would bring that back into active agricultural production. Utilizing a a grant from the Connecticut Department of Agriculture. Um Mr. Reikley got that grant and then on further review, the Department of Agriculture determined that he didn't have too much of an impact on. Um areas under the jurisdiction of the Army Corps of Engineers, and so they actually pulled the grant back, so. Long story short, that project was not able to move forward. Um Mr. Reikley had said, when we were having a conversation about that, that. Um you know, you really, if if you're not gonna be able to farm it, you're not gonna be able to do much more with it than turning it into a bird section. So I reached out to an acquaintance who um actually runs Audubon, Connecticut. Um and looked into the possibility that we could turn that into a bird section, and they came up and. A couple of tours and tried to trudge through the overgrowth. Um and then he made an introduction to the uh Connecticut. Uh Land Trust, Connecticut Coalition, Land Trust, CCLC, CLC, some, Land Trust Coalition. Uh who then passes over to the North Central Land Trust so that, you know, we can talk about the potential for. Uh them buying property and turning it into a bird section. Um and there was some misunderstanding between our land records and. What the Land Trust understood the case to be about what, whether there was an existing conservation easement on the property uh or not. And based on the research that has been done uh by Ruth Calabrese. There is not a conservation easement on it, although there is by. Conditions of of the deed, we are required to put a conservation easement on it if we sell it to a land trust. So the land trust has turned around and said, well, we can't buy it, um so we can either donate it to us or. Not, in the interim, because this had been a conversation that had been happening, one of the neighbors abutting property has reached out to us saying, well. Can I lease it? Um so the long and short of it is, we need to discuss, decide whether we want to convey it at no cost to the land trust. Lease it out to one of the abutting property owners, or simply leave it as it has been for the last thirty years with nothing happening to it. Um so that's the uh the question before us. And Mr. Neal, full disclosure, is the resident who in uh had expressed an interest in leasing the property to be used, I think predominantly for a horse rider.
What are we talking about size?
I think sixteen acres. I can pull it out. Sixteen point four one.
I think sixteen acres, they just uptown property in Merrows to give away is not the right thing to do.
It would be, it would be beated to the land trust with the conservation, so it'd be held that way. One of the things that would happen is if if that were the case, it would be um. Conceivably open to the public. Um my perception would be, you know, if there's an abutting property owner who's interested in leasing it to keep it in the condition that it is, or or slightly improve it. That tends to be the least intrusive thing on the neighborhood.
Yeah, I have to think about it a little bit, I mean, I I know we do lease farmland. I I guess I'd have to look at where it is and kind of think about it, but I mean, I guess I'm open to options.
Okay. Sure.
I was trying to find it, but.
You want to see it? I got it right here.
What's our um? I was trying to find, oh, and so it's behind, okay, okay.
Yeah, it's got a very narrow frontage.
Yeah, I see. Oh, our liability for that kind of.
If we were to lease it?
Yeah.
Or if we were to convey it?
Well, we're leasing it and then someone's riding a horse on it, they fall off their horse and bump their head.
They need to provide coverage, something with down or adding as additional insurance. We require that in our land disappearance for agriculture, as it is, okay. So, we don't have to, this is not something that's mission critical, we're we're certainly not. You know, we don't need to do anything on this immediately, but I wanted to let you know that there have been a couple of interests around this. First by Mr. Reikley, second by the land trust, and thirdly by Mr. Neal and his family. So if you guys wanna think about it, you know, we can, I'll put it on the agenda next time we uh have a meeting, we can talk about it.
Yeah. What kind of condition is this property in? Field, overgrown?
It's very overgrown, it's very wet, um it really is not accessible from the frontage.
Okay.
It is accessible from Mr. Neal's property and probably from their neighbors. I would imagine, um but it it really is, I I tried to walk it and you can get. A hundred feet in before it's like, no, you're not going any further.
Because of the time of year or?
No, no, we did it, I did it in August, and there was, um there was no way that you were, you were.
Oh, just because it's overgrown.
Oh, but like, you're not walking in there, unless you're trespassing on somebody else's property.
The dry corner.
Yeah.
Is behind my property. Yeah, in August.
Oh, okay, I understand. He put the wetlands overlay on it, so.
You can imagine why the RV car would have an interest now.
Still a good burden, I think. I dare, just leave the land the way it is.
Well, I'll let Mr. Neal speak himself.
Yeah, um. As a, possibly two acres, dryish.
Yeah.
Near, just right, and that's south east corner.
Yeah.
Um we have a horse farm, we have pasture for horses.
Right.
So we have maybe about two acres in pasture, so this. Another acre, another two acres will be a huge increase for our productivity.
Yeah.
Um there's also a possibility for opening, maybe some of the trails for a horse to walk through.
Right.
Horse could deal with a bit of movement, that's not a problem. And. You know. We're not going to do what Reikley was trying to do, which is those clear and plowed, and we're talking about. The dry spot, when you pasture, it's. Southern pasture, I don't think you get much out of it.
Okay, so are you considering fencing it? And then letting the, okay.
Yeah.
The horses will pretty much clear if you do that, so. I mean, I'm, my parents have had horses forever, so I'm familiar with, if you just fence an area. Pretty much it gets cleared within a matter of a year's time. Pretty much it gets cleared within a matter of a year's time, so. Because they kill the trees, they eat the bark off of them and they tromp all over everything else, so. They're not, but they, they just don't, things just don't survive within their fair, their illness, just common. Because they step on the roots on top of eating the bark off the trees and it just kills the tree eventually, so. Okay, that's cool.
All right, so, uh.
Like to go walk it. How can I do that? I can go over there and walk it, right?
Yes, but you can access it, you know, there, there is frontage.
I see.
No, Rose Road, I I would bet Mr. Neil would probably give you access through his property.
Yeah, cause you aren't getting.
Oh, no. You, if if you drive on Miller's Road, you drive right past it.
Yeah.
Like when I went out there to walk it, I drove right past it.
Sure.
I mean, I know where he is, so I, I. It's on the north side of the road. And then it busts the uphill town line. Okay, so we'll bring that back next time.
Okay.
Uh, okay, so the next thing, um, can you find my notes here? So in two thousand and ten. I wrote in ordinance, uh, that was supposed to provide property tax relief for low income and permanently disabled. Uh, seniors and our low income seniors and permanently disabled people in our community. Uh, that was based on, um, a lean structure. That did not work. So in two thousand fifteen, tried again. Uh, and I tweaked probably the wrong parts of the ordinance, so it did not work. Um, and now. What this version is trying to do is still provide relief to, um, low income seniors and folks who are permanently disabled utilizing a credit that. Realizing that that people really are not interested in signing up for a lien. They would probably be interested in signing up for a credit. Um, and. Uh, actually, this idea came back to me after seeing that the town of Ellington just basically did this. Um, and I use the credit based system, which was different from the two previous iterations that the town has done, which is a lean basis. So. What I want to do is, um, repeal ordinance fifteen dash four. Uh, and replace it with this. Um, it would affect real property, uh, tax obligations only, so it only affects people. People in their homes, not on on cars or personal property. The home needs to be the principal residence of the applicants. Applicants need to be sixty-five years of age or older, or they need to be the the spouse of somebody who's sixty-five years of age or older. Um. They need to be eligible to receive permanent and total disability benefits under social security. Um, they need to have been taxpayers in the town of East Windsor for one year prior to application. And it'd be current on their current tax obligation. Their, the maximum income allowable would be forty-nine thousand, one hundred dollars, which is the. Standard that is set for the state circuit breaker program and it's amended from time to time, so the ordinance references. Uh, CGS twelve dash one seventy double A. Um, that number, I I think in the statute is something like twenty-eight, six or something. But it's because the statute is old and it's updated by O P M on an annual basis. The number that was just released beginning of the month, uh, for this credit at this benefit is forty-nine thousand, one hundred dollars. So this is mirroring what the state is using for their benchmark and it's updated on an annual basis. Um. There is an income verification requirement every other year, um, so if you have somebody who qualifies in one year and then ends up going and getting a job. And, you know, may have bumped themselves out of the, the field. There's a a recapture provision in that every other year with a biannual, a biannual application. Uh, and the tax credit per applicant would be two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, which, by the way, more than Ellington, they're doing a hundred and fifty. So that's, that's the ordinance proposal. I've tried this twice before, something I'd really like to see happen. Um, I'm pretty sure this is a better approach than the last two that we tried. Uh, but I'm open for feedback from the board.
It's similar to what the veterans one would be.
Yes, it is very similar. The only difference is I had this one drafted when Mr. Barton dropped off that letter.
So is there anything in the statute or the ordinances that would preclude someone from qualifying for both?
No.
Okay.
That is the same, there is no conclusion to that. Um, the veterans one that was presented by the Veterans Commission would be a percentage reduction off your assessment. So the, the benefit differential wouldn't necessarily equate to two hundred and fifty bucks. This is a straight credit. This is not messing around with assessments or, you know, liens or anything. It's just. You qualify, we'll give you this break.
Yeah, I think it's great, I.
Concerns?
Oh, no, no, I, I don't have an issue with it. I would go for it.
All right.
I'm just irritated that I don't qualify.
It's any possibility, I don't either.
Yeah, but I have my troubles in here.
What about you guys?
I think it's a good thing.
All right, then, if the board approves this version tonight, I'll try and have this on the annual town meetings agenda on the twenty eighth, which is why I'm, um. Here with this now instead of trying to do the, the two together. If we don't, if you guys don't want to vote on it tonight and you want to, you know, digest it a bit, I'm fine with that too. I was just looking to utilize the, uh, already scheduled.
Utilize the town meeting for it.
Yep.
Certainly a good time to do it, right?
So could I have a motion? Uh, it would, the, the motion I would like to see would be, um, to. Accept the draft ordinance titled ordinance concerning local property tax relief for certain homeowners age sixty-five or older or permanently totally disabled. Uh, and recommend it to town meeting.
Do we need to include repealing the old?
No, we'll attach it.
Move to accept the draft ordinance and ordinance concerning local property tax relief for certain homeowners age sixty-five or over. Permanently and totally disabled and forward it to town meeting.
Thank you for that, but I'm, I'm referring to Charlie's point. I think we do need to repeal fifteen dash oh four. And and replace it with, I think that does need to be part of it.
So I'll amend my motion.
It's in the ordinance, it's in the ordinance, but I think that needs to be in the motion to go, because the, the motion is what's going to generate the call for the town meetings, not the people we're gonna see.
So I'll amend my motion to repeal. Town ordinance fifteen dash oh four and accept. Draft ordinance, ordinance, this is my, on the right track, okay. Ordinance concerning local property tax relief for certain homeowners age sixty-five or over or permanently and totally disabled. And forward it to town meeting.
That is correct. I'll second. Made in seconded, any discussion?
Well, thank you for your work on this and.
One of these days. Uh, all in favor?
I.
Oppose? Okay, that'll be on the annual town meeting. Also on the annual town meeting, you'll recall that, uh, Styles Bridge is being replaced. Um, and as part of that D O T would like to acquire some town owned land at the bottom of Old Ellington Road. On the, uh, through the south side of the road. Um, we've seen the, the layout. We had the gentleman from B O T here explaining it. The eight twenty-four referral was submitted to planning and zoning commission. It's come back with a unanimous recommendation that we move forward. Um, so the next step in the, uh. Conveyance of the property, D O T would be for the town, the board of selectmen to forward this to a town meeting for, uh. Hopefully approval at the county on the twenty.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Made in second, any discussion?
Did you guys get a walk?
Yes.
Yeah, and how did that go?
Good, and so we had the, um. Both fire departments, police department, uh, public works, Marie and I, uh. Uh, police, police department was there, um, and. Really, the, the site visit was more to talk about the, the. Property acquisition, so these is, there was a property agent that was doing this, not to talk about public safety implications and things. They did commit to us that that whole conversation with all of our emergency responders, uh, would be, or responded, emergency responding agencies. Um, oh, Art Tenderly was there as well. Uh, that conversation around public safety concerns would happen in the springtime, um, because there was some concern about access. You know, which, which, would, would the road be permanently closed? Would it be closed? Would you be able to go down the hill and turn right? Would you have access to this particular fire hydrant? All of that stuff, that's a conversation that's gonna come in the springtime. Um, this was really about the real estate. I mean, the guy, the guy who Ludwig is a realtor.
And.
So he was talking about, here's where the, the line would be, here's how we came at the value, walk this, you know, that, that kind of thing.
Okay.
It was great of them to come out, but, uh, to summon all of the first responders to it, probably all over.
Who is the second? I apologize.
Uh, it was Alan and Marie.
Thank you.
Marie and Alan. Oh, other way around. Yeah, it was Marie and then, and then Alan. Yes, sir.
That open space. Was part of the approval of the scanning going complex.
Yeah, they thought of full title search on it. They know specifically where they can do it and where they can't.
Okay.
And they provided the title search.
Excellent, thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. So shall we refer this to town meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That really is.
Good man.
Yeah, but there's like eight things, five of them are two seconds and none. Um, okay. Gonna be quick with it. So the next up is some good news. Uh, and that has to do with the, uh, state bond funds that, um, our legislators were able to get us. Uh, not last year, but the year prior, uh, in order for us to replace the spillway project, um. Which is at, at East Winter Park, the old blue stone thing up there. Um, oh. That, uh, in order to get the money for that, we need to do an authorizing resolution, which is before you, and you can see that it's cribbed from the town of Portland. Um, this is something that people require before they'll, they'll cut us a check. Um, so this is something that's free to the town, uh, it's, it's paid for fully with state bond funds. It's a needed infrastructure project. We got the money, we just need to go through the steps together. So if somebody would please read the resolution. Uh, and then I'll ask for motion in a second when you talk about it.
All right, authorizing resolution of the Board of Selectmen, Town of East Windsor, Connecticut, December fifteen, two thousand twenty-two certification, I, Amy Lamb. Town clerk of the Town of East Windsor, Connecticut, do hereby certify that following is a true and correct copy. Of a resolution adopted by the Board of Selectmen at its duly called and held meeting on December fifteen, two thousand twenty-two. At which a quorum was present and acting throughout, and that the resolution has not been modified, rescinded or revoked, and is at present in full force and effect. Resolve that the Town of East Windsor may enter into and into with and deliver to the state. Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, any and all documents which it deems to be necessary or appropriate for a grant of five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. For the East Windsor Park Outlet Removal and Replacement Project at twenty-seven Reservoir Avenue. And be it further resolved, Jason E. Bowser, as first selectman of the Town of East Windsor, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver. Any and all documents on behalf of the Town of East Windsor and to do and perform all acts. And things which he deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents. The underside further certifies that Jason E. Bowser now holds the office of first selectman and that he has held that office since November nineteen, two thousand nineteen. Witness thereof, the underside has executed this certificate, this. Whatever day of December, two thousand twenty-two, fifteen. Amy Lamb, Town Clerk, East Windsor, Connecticut. So I make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Made in seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Right on. Tax refunds.
Move to approve the tax refunds totaling seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty cents.
I'm sorry, I just, I. Just two things back.
Missed that.
His niche.
And, uh, tax refunds, okay, I see. Uh, license agreement between the town and New City Builders LLC regarding Walcott Landing, so. Uh, the Walcott Landing. Kind of medium complex, uh, has a crumbling foundation issue. Um, of there, I think they have thirteen buildings. They're scheduled for three of those buildings to be replaced. Uh, for their foundations to be replaced starting next month. The town owns property that a bus, Walcott Landing. Um, and they, the company that's gonna be doing the remediation work on the foundations has asked if. We would enter into a license agreement with them so that they could use that for staging of their equipment. Uh, and some of the, I think they're actually doing some topsoil that they would then put back. Um, it's the least impactful, uh, option for the residents who live in the apartment or the condo complex. Um, but in conversation with town attorney, there is absolutely no way we're gonna let them do that without a license agreement. Um, because. If they start stockpiling stuff on the property and, and then it becomes actually a housing port issue to get them to move it. Um, so the, the gentleman from, um. New City actually reached out to us asking if we'd be willing to do this. I think it's absolutely an easy thing for us to do to help out. Uh, but it's a kind of, so I'm bringing a few guys.
I would make, um, a motion to, um, authorize the first selectmen to enter into a lease agreement.
License agreement.
A license agreement with. New City, New City Builders LLC, um, and the town of East Windsor for the necessary, um. Use in order to take care of what needs to be done at Walcott Landing.
Second, made in seconded, any discussion?
Will you be editing this? Cause this said November twenty twenty.
Yeah, well.
Okay.
I thought I.
Playing on. Remodeling any trees in that area.
Sorry.
Parcel, we own is cleared.
Yeah, I, I believe that's true.
I don't think.
Let me, let me pull up.
Sure, that's the case.
I gotta turn this.
Last time I remember, there's like a tree buffer between our property and Walcott, but I could be wrong.
Awesome, you live right there. Is there, is there a buffer?
There is still trees standing. Not that I object, but he may, um. They do tend to make. If you've seen one of these projects done, it's quite elaborate. The amount of earth they have to remove.
Yeah.
To. Jack the building up, put it on stilts, remove the old foundation and pour a new one.
Yeah, we're only talking about an acre of land.
And they'll fill all of them. With soil and equipment too.
All right, let me specify with him about the, um, or intention that they never remove trees.
Is that what you were concerned about? You guys all?
Yeah.
Um, I didn't even know about it tonight.
What's that?
No, she, uh. It was a concern mine and I would know of the proposed agreement in both sides.
Okay, so, um, I will get clarity and make sure there's something in there about not disturbing the, the trees on the property. But other than that, are they, are they concerned?
Are they able to access that land without?
Yeah, they got a lot of, I think that's it. Yep, and, and the guy was very, for right, it's gonna be a mess, but it's the quickest way of getting the folks back in their homes.
They're currently out.
They're going to be out.
Well, yeah, I know they have to. Even if it happens.
I think they're talking about like something like an eight, twelve leaf displacement.
Yeah.
They're getting quicker at it.
They are.
So. Mo, there was a motion in a second. Right?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Thank you for that, both of those suggestions. Now we're on the tax refunds. Sarah, this is your thing.
Move to approve the tax refunds totaling seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty cents.
Second.
Made in seconded, uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, now we're on to ten eight, which is the disposition of South Road ownership for certain properties. Um, so we sent letters of intent to all of the property owners expressing our willingness to. Uh, convey the ground that their homes sit onto them. This has gone through. It's gone through the Department of Housing, um, O P M, the Bond Commission, twice. Um, so now we're at the point where we have done a lot line reconfiguration, we've subdivided the property. Uh, we have done the eight twenty-four referral. Now we're at the point where we can convey the property. So in November, I sent out, um, letters of intent. Asking them to, to kindly sign them and return them. There are seventeen parcels and. asking them to to kindly sign them and return them. There are seventeen parcels in question. We got ten of them back. Um, so just to keep things rolling for those ten people who have returned their paperwork and are willing to move forward with it. I don't want this to be jammed up forever. Um, so I'd like to take the ten parcels and um convey those through the town meeting at one dollar per lot. Um, and the the addresses of the ten properties where the letters have been pinned have been returned are thirteen South Road, ten South Road, nine South Road, twelve South Road, eight South Road, four South Road, four South Road again is actually two parcels. Six South Road, eleven South Road, and thirty-three South Road. Um, so I'd like to put that on the town meeting agenda uh on the twenty-eighth so we can just move forward with this. And that leaves us in the position where we are only the landlords for seven people instead of seventeen people.
Has there been any communication with those other people that do they not want to move forward with this or?
There has been communication with some of them. Um, some of them have indicated that, oh, yeah, you know, I'm gonna do it, or some of them have said, you know, the lawyer's looking at it, or some of them have said, I want to negotiate my own deal. Um, and all of that, you know, it's perfectly perfectly reasonable behind it. Um, perfectly reasonable positions for them to take. However, those things are jamming up these other ten people who have had these now sitting in the queue for nearly two months. Time ago.
I'll make a motion that we forward to town meeting number summer twenty-eight. Um. The property fifty South Road, ten South Road, nine South Road, four South Road, eight South Road, four South Road, four South Road, six South Road, lucky Road, and thirty-three Cops Road um to convey uh property to those individuals at home set property in the way with the town meeting in the month of twenty-eight.
Second.
Made and seconded. I'll take that back. Uh, any further discussion?
Just glad to see we're finally at this phase. I think this has been one of those projects three years. That's. Well, I mean, for us, it's been three years.
Yeah. Why this? We have done this right so that these people are not in jeopardy in the future. They're on their land outright. We're not gonna be landlords.
Right.
We'll make it the speed of government, but I'll.
It's been a long road for me because I've had to deal with it. Probably twelve years now, um, because Park Hill, my setup there for all those years, that was people in the south. There was some at the last meeting that we had with one property um that was actually owned by two pieces of property that were next door to each other that was owned owned by the same person. Um, so there was some adjustment made to that one property, so it was more balanced than what it was.
Yeah.
Um, so that was taken care of for them. So uh this is a win-win for those ten people and um hopefully the others seven will at some point uh realize that and take it all themselves.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So. All right, it's like. Okay, so by far the most pressing issue over the last couple of weeks has been uh how the town is going to address the revow circumstance. Um, I I met with undersecretary Heff three times, um, including tonight's meeting to try and get a handle on what the best options were. There there were, there were a lot of discussions with the rebound company, uh with town staff, with stakeholders and constituents. That took a lot of time. Uh, but I think we came to the best resolution that was available to us with that. At our last selectmen's meeting, uh as you'll recall, graduate students from Westfield State University presented their findings of their field assessment on the Town of East Windsor's economic development strategies and the ways that we communicate them. This is the second year that the town has worked with students from Westfield, and in both cases, the students were able to recognize strengths and areas where we could improve. One of their recommendations is to make some uh improvements to the town website, which is something that we're gonna be taking a look at. Um. So following up on the work, but following up on the work the Westfield students did, uh December second, uh building official Ken Rich and I met with the owners of Brockford Brewing Company to discuss their experience doing business in the Town of East Windsor. They were pleased to hear about the personnel changes and process improvements that have been made in the last few years and noted that the that based on their experience, those improvements will go a very long way. So that's both an academic and a real world perspective. Later that night, I had the opportunity to celebrate the past year at the Warehouse Point Fire Department's annual dinner. Uh, and on December tenth, I did the same with Robert Fire Department's annual dinner. It was a pleasure to join both uh volunteers and professional staff at both events to celebrate the successes that they each had had over the last twelve months, wish them a happy holiday season and a safe year ahead. Uh, on December fifth, I was happy to help out at PTO's Holiday Store at the Brockbrook Elementary School. The event provides uh students with in the students within the school have the opportunity to do a little holiday shopping for their families. On December sixth, our police union teamed up with our community services department for the second time in as many weeks to bring some holiday joy to families in our community. I counted fourteen sworn police officers helping disadvantaged children and families in our town shop for the holidays. A key takeaway for me was to see the selflessness of the kids as they walk the aisles uh passing by toys and shop for their parents and their siblings. Incidentally, those fourteen sworn officers represented more than half of our total police force, which was a really touching thing to see. Uh, they even went so far as to to arrange their own coverage for the shifts that they were supposed to be working so that they could be there and participate in the the shopping cop program. It was very much appreciated. The Town of Manchester is having success with some downtown revitalization efforts that have returned rundown or abandoned buildings back to economic use. On December seventh, Director of Planning and Community Development Ruth Calabrese and I met with Manchester's Town Manager, Assistant Town Manager and Economic Development Director to better understand how they've been able to develop their program. We were also able to share our experience with the ARPA-funded Erase Grant as well as our new planned community development tool. I appreciate the interlocal collaboration with the Town of Manchester and look forward to swapping notes with them again soon. Um, on December eighth, Senator Anwar, Representative Foster and I met with the leadership of the Connecticut Trolley Museum to discuss their successes in two thousand twenty-two and their plans for two thousand twenty-three. Representative Hall was unable to join due to a prior commitment, but the four of us continue to be actively engaged with the museum and look forward to helping with their future success. To that point, the museum was awarded a forty-five thousand dollar grant through the state's Neighborhood Assistance Act, uh with the town serving as their local sponsor. The Neighborhood Assistance Act provides participating corporations with a tax credit off of their state tax that equals the value of their contribution they made to a local charity. So they wherever the funding company was, um made a forty-five thousand dollar uh donation to the Trolley Museum and will get a forty-five thousand dollar tax credit for it. So it's really everybody runs the circumstance. Um, congratulations to the Trolley Museum for their funding. On December ninth, town officials and emergency management staff met with property, property agents from the Department of Transportation to discuss the upcoming replacement of Stiles Bridge on Scannick Road. The utility work for that project is tentatively scheduled to begin in late Q two of next year with the actual bridge replacement starting either in late summer of twenty-three or more likely in the spring of twenty-four. This project has been badly needed for decades and it's a welcome improvement in town. On December tenth, my family and I were back at the Trolley Museum. Uh, this time for Storytime with Santa, which included a trolley ride, Storytime, arts and crafts on the trolley and lots of photos. Uh, that was the last weekend of the year for Storytime with Santa, but Winter Fest will be going through the end of the year. Uh, I make regular outreach with our senior citizens a priority, and over the last two weeks have had two opportunities to touch base with them. On December seventh, I had my monthly coffee at the Senior Center and did the same at Park Hill on thirteen. The format for these visits is really pretty simple. I I just take a chair, put it in the middle of the room and talk about whatever people want to talk about. Um, and I find that they always have questions or comments about local events or initiatives that are poignant, insightful, and a lot of times result in homework. Um, but it really is truly one of the most fun things that I do is just to get to sit with people and say, what do you want to talk about? And and the conversation goes wherever the people we're visiting with want to go. Um, so that's what I've been up to. Marie, what do you got?
Absolutely not.
Okay, uh, so the the balance meeting was canceled this month due to no applications. So uh they took the opportunity to attend a legals, legal procedures and regulations training over in Windsor, at Windsor Town. By Land Use Attorney, this guy, I believe his name is. It was really good. It was very open-ended. Um, you know, everybody that was attending or many of the people that were attending submitted questions in advance. So those were, that was the agenda, and then kind of discussion went on from there. It was a good refresher on a lot of kind of wetlands related um procedures that we, you know, we don't get faced with very often, so you get rusty and forget them. So it was a good review. Um, I did attend the Rod Brook Fire Department Annual Dinner this year. Uh, and it was really nice, but what I was struck mostly with is, you know, they have a lot of people that have given really their lives to the fire department. But it was also good to see they had a pretty strong contingent of younger folks there too.
I noticed the same.
I'm sure they'd like a few more, so if anybody's, you know, looking for something to do, but that, you know, they they had a really good mix of people and it was just a great time. Um, and I think um but anyway, I appreciate what they do. Um, then we had, I skipped the Brockbrook Fire Department Commission Meeting, although I did review it briefly with the chief while I was at the annual dinner. And uh their budget this year is gonna be uh eighteen hundred dollars more than it was last year, primarily for fuel costs. Um, so everything else is flat. Um. Oh, yeah. And then so instead I went to the the Democratic Town Committee's annual holiday gathering, which was also very nice. And then we had the Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting this week, which was just the heat, the hearing on the Scannick uh Event Hall. That was continued to the twenty-seventh at this point in time. You know, there was a bunch of commentary mainly by the lawyers and the the applicants, um, the lawyer and the applicants uh and and some of the um residents, especially the butters had some good comments too. So that'll that'll continue at least to the twenty-seventh. And that's all I have.
All right. Two, two firefighters in Brockford received fifty-year awards.
Yes.
Um, Wayne Simkin Senior and Bill Howard Senior.
Yeah.
Um, I think Rich had the longest-serving one in Warehouse Point. Did he have forty, thirty, thirty, it was thirty? Quite, quite impressive.
There was a lot of guys in there that were thirty, forty years, a lot of them. So they they really have a cognitive group there.
Yeah. Sarah?
Um, on December second, I attended the Warehouse Point Fire Department's annual dinner. Um, congratulations to Assistant Chief Richard Austin on his retirement and thirty years of service. Um, they also recognized firefighter of the year, Morris Karas, unsung hero Heather Mitchell, uh Fire Officer of the Year Stephen Ellis. Um, on December eighth, I attended the Board of Assessment Appeals Meeting. The board unanimously reelected Austin Holden as chairman and set the dates for their meeting and hearing schedule for the upcoming year. The deadline to file a file an appeal for the grand list of October first and motor vehicle supplemental list is February twentieth, twenty twenty-three. The application must be received either in person or via fax by the assessor's office by four thirty PM on that day. The application and guidelines for filing an appeal can be found on the town's website under the Board of Assessment Appeals tab. The hearing dates are scheduled for the following dates, March thirteenth, fourteenth, fifteenth, sixteenth, eighteenth, twentieth, twenty-first, twenty-third, and twenty-fifth. The hours will be five PM to eight PM on weekdays and nine AM to two PM on Saturdays. Um, and then I haven't seen a lot about this, but I believe breathes across America is this Saturday at the um United Methodist Church. Um, the Veterans Commission donated five hundred dollars to East Windsor Social Services to assist with the ham and gift card dedication for families in town for Christmas um that participated through social services. And the Veterans Commission elected the following officers to serve the next year. Jim Barton Chairman, Rick Webster Vice Chairman, Gil Hayes Secretary, and Peter Sanders Treasurer. Um, and just wishing you all a happy, safe, and healthy holiday and can't believe we'll see you next year. It's like the year just flew by. Crazy.
Crazy about pandemic. Things go so much better. Charlie?
Okay, I didn't get a chance to write a formal report, but I too attended the Warehouse Point Dinner, which was a good time. Uh, we could see those recognitions there. Um. Uh, the on the twelfth, there was supposed to be a BMX um uh meeting, but that got canceled. And on uh the fifth, I did attend the Warehouse Point Fire uh Commission Meeting. They um had a lighter than normal calls for the month of November, and the fire marshal reported um a good number of inspections done uh mostly on multifamily homes. It says almost all those are complete now on the Warehouse Point side of town. Um. And just a reminder, torchlight parade is this uh Saturday by thirty PM. And uh that's it.
Lauren? Own participation. This is the public's second opportunity to address members of the board. Uh, first ask if there's anybody here in the room who would like to address the board, start by stating your name and your address. Your hand I saw first, sir. I'll get to you second.
Paul Anderson, eighty-nine Main Street, progress. Torchlight Parade. Brockbrook Library will be open. Have refreshments available during the torchlight parade. We do that every year. It's a great vantage point for anyone who chooses to show up. Um, it isn't. The selectmen's agenda that gets put out is excellent.
Thank you.
Includes all the background material. I think it would be appropriate for all town agencies with their agendas to do exactly the same thing, and that may take a directive to tell you to do it. I had an experience with planning and zoning. Now, ZBA. Where I got the agenda with the background material you couldn't get. But I went down to the office to see what do we do about this? Well, I was given some printed material for the one item I was interested in. But then I was also directed to the public computer outside and say, here, here's how you get it. And it was broken. That page was a four oh four error.
Oh, I think the site was broken, not the uh.
Yeah.
Okay. But the computer was fine and
the individual finding that, well, I just put that up there. Well, I don't care. It doesn't work, and that's the point. Well, if it was all in one item, it would be in one place instead of, oh, you get the agenda here and then you go chase this over here. That to me is a problem. This is the simplest thing possible. You get everything and you can do what you want with what you get. But when you can't get everything, or you can't find it, or you don't know where to look for, it is annoying. And without that background material as a member of the public, you're not sure whether you ought to attend or you really better attend. You're trying to find out what's actually happening. So that's a recommendation.
Um, not required by FOIA, but it is a good point, and the reason that we started doing this is because I wanted people in the audience to be able to see what we're doing. I'll make that recommendation to the other uh.
I don't care about FOIA. I care about Town of East Windsor, and you're the boss. I think you ought to tell them all to do it, but it's like.
I I am I am the boss because they are elected in their own right, in which case I do not. Um, so I only have so limited limited control.
Well, then recommend. That's fine. Better than nothing.
Yeah, people who are elected in their own right, they work for the voters. That's it. Um. So. You, sir?
Yes, we sure. Brockbrook. Like to just thank all you people on our side of the table. I really appreciate what you're talking about tonight with the revaluation. Very professional. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody online who would like to address the members of the Board of Selectmen? Is anybody online? One last time for anybody in the room? Okay, we will have an executive session. It will just be the five of us. Um, I none, um, what you need. I don't believe action will follow.
We'll move, we go into executive session at nine eighteen PM.
Second, motion has been made by Sarah, seconded by Alan. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, we're in executive session at nine eighteen PM. But he's very. Executive session at ten oh eight, um, is uh their motion.
Be adjourned at ten oh eight PM.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned at ten oh eight PM.